Ready, yep. Look, I can twist my arm. All right, I'd like to call to order the Radcliffe City Council Special Call Meeting for November 10th, 2025, 5:00 PM at Radcliffe City Hall. It will be streamed live on Facebook. If you can rise for an invocation, then remain standing for a pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your many blessings. Father, we're thankful for the mayor and each council person and our city attorney as they sit here and help make the rules and regulations that will govern our city. Father, we also pray for those that are sick during this time. We pray for those that are out in this weather and out in this cold, and we ask that you give those people comfort who may need it. We also ask that you bless our service members both here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Bill? Present.
Brown?
Here.
Deroch here.
Merle?
Here.
Owens?
Present.
Cox.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. We just have new business. This will be a closed session for KRS 618101B acquisition or sale of real property, G economic development, and should be personnel should be added on that. That was my mistake, so. Do we have a motion to?
Sub move.
Second.
Second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I may let you all step out because if they get back here, they start getting comfortable and want to.
Want any chocolate?
We won't be in just a few minutes. Motion to go back into the called meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let it be known that no official vote or action was taken while in closed session. All right, this time I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? No? Okay, all right. Motion carries. We are adjourned, and we will go into our work session. All right. You can use that, actually. All right, we have a couple rezoned items on the agenda. Murray, you want to come up? I'll turn that mic on, Murray.
Okay, we have a rezone application, and it's for the property at 238 Cedar Oak Drive, Vine Grove, Kentucky, which is part of PVA map number 138-20-07-003 Arlington Cent-- excuse me, Arlington Center Lot 3B from a commercial zone to a residential four zone, and it was requested by Silvergate Properties LLC. Silvergate Properties LLC is requesting a zone map amendment for 8.48 acres of a 48.791 acre parcel, which is located at the aforementioned address. The existing zoning classification is a commercial zone. The proposed zoning classification is an R4 zone. Existing land use of the property is a farm, and it is 8.48 acres in size. The surrounding properties consist of Fort Knox military installation, single-family detached residential, multifamily apartments, a farm, and vacant land. The Radcliffe Planning Commission recommended approval of the zone map amendment from a commercial zone to a R4 zone with the condition that downward-facing exterior lighting shall be installed by the developer.
They did not make that a condition.
They did not put that in there? I know it was discussed.
It was discussed, but it was not part of their motions.
It wasn't in the motion.
They hadn't, they did not make any requirements like that.
Okay.
One thing to note, too, what Murray says is accurate, that the parcel, the entire tract that this parcel is a part of adjoins Fort Knox, but the actual land that was asking to be rezoned does not touch Fort Knox. Right? It does not actually touch it. It's, you can see on the map, it's part of-- and it's a little hard to see because the map does, well, you can see it up in the top right. See in the top right, the crosshatch there, it shows where this parcel is, and it's part of a larger parcel. And that larger parcel up on the north side adjoins Fort Knox. But this particular area, this 8.48 acres, does not actually touch the installation. But what he said is accurate. And you'll see from the hearing transcript, Mr. Bradford from the Garrison Command, Deputy Garrison Commander, came and he spoke and-- they were not, well, they didn't speak against it, they just showed their concerns again. And it wasn't, it was a lot of the same concerns as before, but it doesn't actually adjoin the property. And so they were, the comments were in accordance with that factual situation. But I wanted to correct that. There is no condition. The Planning Commission didn't require any exterior lighting to be downward facing. There was discussion that most exterior lighting that has a lot of illumination is already downward facing. Occasionally, you'll have landscape lighting, you'll have people light up their houses and that kind of thing, but it's not shooting up in the air like floodlights and spotlights and that sort of thing, so.
So you said Fort Knox is located where on this map? Like here?
My understanding is Fort Knox is going to be up in this direction here. Yep.
So the property that we approved before, which was the Lot 3A, I believe, that is, that had conditions. This one does not.
Correct. Yeah, that one had conditions of downward-facing exterior lighting.
And seven-foot fence.
And seven-foot fence. It was with street, three-strand barbed wire at the top. Of course, that was part of the same parent tract. It was directly adjacent to the base. Whereas this one's kind of internal to the rest of the property.
So all they're saying is the external lighting, no fencing?
They actually, as our attorney said, that that was not actually made part of the motion.
Yeah, no.
Strike that.
Yeah, no, no conditions. That was just, that was just an error, unfortunately. And you'll have access to all the materials and, and just my opinion, I don't think you need to have another public hearing on this one, okay? This one is easier than the last one, in my opinion.
They were here.
Well, Mr. Bradford was there, you said.
He was, he was there. Well, he was there at the other one, too, but anyway, so, I mean, you're free to do that, but the only witnesses were Mr. Turner and Mr. Bradford, and they both went on for quite a bit of time. And Mr. Turner actually asked questions of Mr. Bradford, which is fine. He can do that legally. There were no other members of the public present, so it would, that was it. There were no other documents presented, so all your arguments and everything that would be said, I submit to you is going to be in this transcript. So take a look at it if you're so inclined, and the Planning Commission was unanimous in favor of recommending. And they, they heard and they asked questions, so it wasn't a rubber stamp. They asked good questions of the Deputy Garrison Commander, Mr. Bradford. And he and Mr. Turner were both very professional and just laid their cases out. And for the record, Mr. Bradford always makes it very clear that the installation is not speaking against or for a particular rezoning. They just, right, they just want their concerns on the record. And he said they're concerned about litigation. They're concerned about angry upset citizens someday buying property and discovering somehow that it's noisy near Fort Knox, and they have helicopters and guns and things that go boom in the night.
Right.
So, and I'm not trying to minimize what he was saying, but that, that was a concern.
Just for the record as well, I did email Mr. Bradford today. I gave him a schedule of the council meetings to include this meeting plus the meeting, the next regularly scheduled meeting, November 18th and then the 16th of December. I told him exactly what the scope was at those meetings, and he said that he would not be here tonight at this meeting. Didn't indicate whether he'd be attending any of the others, but I just wanted to pass that along.
Well, my assumption is they are, this is the last of his requests on this because we have used--
Good question. I, I asked Mr. Turner during the hearing, is this it?
Yes.
Basically, and he said, yes, this is it. And he, the last time, he said, I should have included this tract in with the one before. He said, but I didn't do it. I'm kicking myself now, but this, this, this is it. This is the last one, so.
He's got a commercial piece on each end of the parent track still existing, but everything I know--
Going to keep those, apparently, yeah.
Yeah, like, I've been working on the zone maps since Friday and today a bit, and like, basically just putting all the pieces that puzzle, and that's all that's left that isn't zoned, and he's keeping those commercials. So everything else provided this was actually passed would end up being R4, other than those two endpoints.
But he could always change his mind.
He could. He could come back and--
He, he could, but he, I don't know the future, but I asked him, and he said, there are no plans whatsoever to come back with anything else. This was it, and I would hope that would be true just because, you know, it's, it's been a little bit involved, so. But then, you know, that's, that's how these zone map amendments always are, right? I mean, they swear to tell the truth, and does that mean they can't change their mind? But, you know, it's been multiple rezones up there, and they've all been R4, so.
Obviously, even the planning zone, if someone changed their mind, then they come back the next month and they do something else.
Well, you lose credibility when you do that, and the commission usually remembers that, but.
I still remember it all these years.
All right. Everybody has anything? You can follow up with Murray. All right, Murray, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, item number two is the youth council. This was brought up a little while ago by Councilwoman Owens. I'll turn it over to you and let you talk about what your direction is again on this.
Yes, sir. When we discussed it in a work session several months ago, actually, it's been about two and a half years working on this one, I started with North Harden High School, the history teacher, Anna Riggs. She's also in charge of the civics club, and I've done a few civics presentations there. And then fiscal year '23 or '24, our state attorney normally does his civics health assessment about how the state looks when they look at the state constitution, the US Constitution, and immigration laws. And we were about 50/50 as far as good and not good in the state. The school does not have an official civics program, and for the requirement to graduate from Harden County School System, the students normally took a, I think it was a hundred-question test, and I believe they had to get 60 or 70 to pass on. So based on how the state looks in their civics health assessment, a senate bill was created to where now there's a half-credit course required for all seniors to graduate, and they can either take the half course, half-credit course civics class, or they can go on and take the end-of-the-year graduation, I would say, exam as part of the requirements. And so looking at all of that, I just sort of went through all of the similar small cities that we have to come up with what we would consider as a youth city council. So starting at the school, it went from the school to Mark Casey at our school board just as a courtesy to make sure what's in that document as far as what they would do as students to have a voice at a younger age. We're talking ninth through 12th grade in the schools in the Harden County School System. So after it went around and everyone looked at it, they kept it partly of April/May, and then it was turned over to Mr. Gifford, who is the curriculum developer for the Harden County Schools, and he kept it during the summer, all the way until September/October timeframe. And then we finally had a sit-down one Friday, and they do want the program, they just wanted to, their only involvement is, they wanted to select the students. They want to make sure that it, we didn't have just one type of student there, whether they were in the Student Government Association or the Y Club or any other extracurricular civics engagement type of program. They wanted to make sure it was diverse. And so really, the ordinance was a courtesy for them. It's nothing that would cost us anything to do. They would only be required to attend one meeting a month after school. And if they had a project to work on that was similar to what we've been discussing, they would develop their own real-time kind of program to where they would learn about the three layers of government or three branches of government and how it works at the municipal level. So by the time they become voters, it's not the first time they've heard how governance works. And of course, they get to meet all of us, and it's kind of a low impact. It doesn't require you to create anything. It's more of them being here like our regular individuals who come and witness how we do our business. And so it's, it's back with me to move on to actually get it into a first read because we only discussed it. So you'll see it on, next week, I believe, on the 18th. And so if you, if you're not familiar with it, you'll see it again since the last time we kind of kicked it around and discussed it, so that's what's out there now. It'll help them with a little leadership. It'll help them have a voice. Some, some young people think that they don't really have an impact in government. They're pretty much told what they can and can't do. It'll definitely help them with some leadership skills. It will help them along the way in school when we're talking about decision-making and cognitive development and how they mature along the way and actually respect governance and understand there's a difference between wants and needs and what real expectations are and how we do our budgeting and how we make decisions and who's responsible for what in their city. So at the end of the day, they will really have an insight of what quality of life is versus what they think it is because they're hearing it from the outside or they're hearing it from the third and fourth party. So it'll, it'll align what they're learning in school if they're in the Y Club or if they're in the Student Government Association, even the Beta Club for some of their community service projects that they do and their competitions that they do once a year. So it's a kind of a culminating activity. Last thing, it'll be very similar to the Harden County Teen Court Program that's run the same way that I'm in now. And so it's a courtesy to let the schools know. We brief to them every year as we recruit in those schools. And then, of course, all of the business happens at the Justice Center twice a month, the second and third Thursday, second and fourth Thursday of the month, and they actually go through real cases, so there you go, sir.
Just, I've got to be clear. So what is it the council has to do as far as--
The council won't have to do anything. Well, they'll see the ordinance to approve starting, establishing the program.
Who has the ordinance right now?
I thought she--
We don't.
Yeah, we don't have--
Oh, Ms. Ashley had it back from the last time we discussed it. It was just in a working group, so I thought she had put it out.
No, no, it's not in the, I have her go, she's got to go get something for me for something else.
Because I know she said she was going to put it on the calendar on 18th or next--
Let me find that when she gets back in here. Because the ord, I don't know if we ever came to a--
We didn't. That, that was, that was the information one.
So I don't know if we had like an agreement of an ordinance or the body--
Okay.
That's the only thing--
That was the last time we discussed it with the paper itself was months ago.
So if we do an ordinance, who's responsible for the oversight on this program?
It is the mayor's city, youth city council.
Is there an ordinance from back there? Go ahead.
So it, when you say who's responsible, since we're, it's during the times that we have our city council meetings, there's going to be one document in which they sign in when they come to the meetings as part of the accountability that goes back to the school, but other than that, they are only sitting here at the time that we are conducting what we're conducting now.
So I'm a little confused. It sounds like it's more of a school program than a city program.
Well, for the city to help them understand what we do and what we do when we're sitting here, if you see it as, and it is a youth program, actually, with no cost to it.
I mean, I think that's great. I just, I'm just thinking, if we make it an ordinance, what is our--
But we didn't know, I didn't know if it needed to be. I think it started, it was set up as an ordinance.
Initially, I think we discussed it.
Right.
It could be an ordinance, a resolution.
So I don't know which vehicle it would work.
But it sounds like maybe more the school is doing something. They would just attend our meetings, and we would recognize them as a--
A voice.
Sign off on the fact that they've been present. Like the mayor could just sign off on some type of check-in coming sheet.
Or they have a checking sheet when they show up, because I'm assuming they're getting the credits for their activity at the school, for participation.
They'll get participation credit, yes.
Towards their half-credit course, toward their half-credit, yeah.
Ms. Owens, you said that the students would be selected by the civics class?
They just wanted to make sure they knew from their school who was in it.
Okay.
That's all.
So we're, we're not talking about a council. We're just talking about individual students who are attending to learn more about city council business--
Governance, yes.
City government business.
City government business.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So we didn't know what to, whether it was going to, it started out as a, an ordinance, but it may not have to be. It was just how it was drafted originally. I think we talked about it in, what, April, March, April?
I like Pam. I love the idea and everything that you're doing.
Of last year.
But that's a couple of years ago, and at that time, we, I think Mike Pike said and JJ said that it probably shouldn't be an ordinance only because of legal liability and the fact that we don't want to make it a law. We're not making it a law.
Right.
Right?
Right, but that's how you drafted it. So I don't know what vehicle you want it to be.
Is there going to be an interaction while the meeting is taking place?
No, unless they have a question, just like the, anybody in the ordinance, in the audience will ask, right.
Okay.
They're here to learn how things work.
Ms. Owens, who, who's in charge of it at the school?
It would be Ms. Anna Riggs.
Anna Riggs. We may want to reach out to her. Who at the central office did you say? Did you say submit central office?
It's Mr. Gifford who's in charge of curriculum.
Okay.
Because they're not trying to start it. They just want to make sure for any of their students they knew who it was. And they were still trying to decide whether they could actually make it credible or just have it as an extracurricular activity for civic engagement. And I think that's what they're leaning to. It's just going to be civic engagement on their own time.
I do think the kids need to understand and be involved in that kind of stuff. I definitely agree with that. I just feel like if we make it an ordinance, then I feel like there's some responsibility on our part for oversight and, and that's--
And it doesn't, and it doesn't, it's real, it's, it doesn't have to be an ordinance. It's just how it was drafted originally. It does not have to be because we're, we hadn't even gotten that, and that form. Mr. Pike?
Ma'am, so who, who will actually be appointing to the youth council? Which body, which, which entity is appointing these students? Because the original draft had the mayor appointing, subject to the approval of this city council. And you're, you're, you're still not wanting that, are you?
I don't thi, no, he, I don't think he wants to do that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a terrible idea.
It's the school, right. It's the school.
And then vacancies are handled by the school, removal would be handled by the schools, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, this is John and North or just--
John and North and Christian. It's for our Radcliffe schools, ninth through 12th grade.
If I'm hearing you right, I think what you're saying, and I, and I like what you're saying, but I think what you're saying is after we had the initial introduction a couple of years ago, you took it back based on our recommendations to take it back, and you're working with the school, which seems like those are the appropriate organizations.
Right.
The school then will instruct students as to our meeting times, come here--
Right.
And observe and get credit and then kind of watch what this body does and works. Yes, and the school then would be the oversight of those students going back to attain their credit. I'd be signing off on something like Pam said, so maybe it's, and again, like, you could be a liaison if this is your baby, right? And then somebody could be the liaison of it or speak on it. Maybe you go to the school and say, you know, this is a program. We'd like for you to attend our council meetings. That's what I think you're kind of saying, right?
Exactly. That's how we have it now with the Harden County Teen Court. Each one of us will pick a high school along with our counterpart attorney. We have six of the commissioners. I tend to do North Harden, but each one of us go out just before the school starts just to reinvigorate, re-remind them what we are doing in teen court. They don't select the teens. The teens will come out in August for open, kind of an open night, and then they come on their own, and they get training for six weeks as to how Department of Juvenile Justice works and mock trials for us. And then we get sworn in, which we just did that two weekends, two Sundays ago. And Thursday coming up this week will be the first case that they actually have. And the cases are funneled through the court-designated work, the CDW, or directly from the police department. We're not that involved because these are kids who have, who have felonies right now, and it's a whole different diversion program. But the schools have no liability for the students. They don't, they do know who the students are, but there's, there's nothing for them to do. For us, we are the liaisons, both the volunteer adult members and some parents are there watching their own students, and they're there 6:00 to 8:30. And of course, all their attorneys in, in that program. We're not that, we're not at that level because we're not doing that kind of job. But for them to come and listen to intergovernmental work, if you're talking state roads versus county roads or grants that are being written from the, from the city to the state, they'll get to hear it and they'll get to learn it. So by the time they are of, as we say, voting age, this is not the first time they understood how governance works. Because not every child is in the Y Club either. They just don't have the interest for it.
It has nothing to do with the community hours? They have to have 10 hours every month?
Not unless the school, and from what I understand is to give them having set that as a--
As a community?
Yeah, no, they just enjoy that they're actually going to be here and learning something.
I would even welcome the whole group. I mean, if they put together a group like that through the school system, I would welcome the whole group.
It may morph into that, you know, we are competing with their social activities. So, you know, I, I'm hoping to have 12. It could be more. I mean, in our teen court now, we have 74. The most we've had is 90. So, and then it tends to drop off when they go into their sports and band and all the other things, but.
I, I like the idea of it being through the school, through the civic class, because that is more apropos of what they're, what they're learning and what they need. And if they had, if they had it aligned perfectly well, and if they had some sort of a, an agenda or an itinerary for their school course, you have to attend so many council meetings, maybe bring back a report of what did you learn or what did we do, things like that, and then, and then conduct it within the school environment.
Right.
That, that takes a lot of the liability and pressure off of this body, right? But it gives them what your goal is, teaching the youth the engagement and how does this governmental body work? And in case one day they might want to be sitting here, right? So I like that idea, but I do like it with the schools and not necessarily with this body, right?
I agree with you, Councilwoman Merle. I just think Ms. Owens has wonderful foresight and a vision toward what we could be doing. But it's just, we can't pass an ordinance or anything to require kids to do anything. That's just not our bailiwick. But if the schools do that and they make it part of their curriculum or extracurricular activities, I would love to entertain--
Which is what they've talked about already.
I love the fact that you're bringing--
So are we saying we want it on, so, it'll be on their letter here.
Yes.
I'll have it redone that way.
From the school's perspective to us.
Yeah, that was just the original, if you say, platform, if you will.
Yeah.
I think it's just an ask of the school that we're accepting. Obviously, our public, these are public meetings. I mean, obviously, and if we have to add a little bit more to it to ensure that the students are getting a credit or something, I think we could entertain.
And we, we could, we could do at most, I think, a resolution, you know, applauding such a program and pledging, you know, cooperation. Getting into nitty-gritty details. I, I wouldn't even want the mayor to sign off on a sign-in sheet, to be honest, because that, if that sign-in sheet is used as part of their participation credit and grade credit, we don't need to be a part of that.
And if it's not, here's the other option, sir. If they don't do the credit and they're just looking for engagement in the city, which makes it even easier, and I think that's what Mr. Gifford was nodding about. And I think that's what Mr. Gifford was nodding about when we met. Because they want to try to be as non-burdenous as possible. They just know they come here.
And if it's a city sign-in sheet, it's public record.
Correct.
And I don't know...
They don't want that.
I don't want that.
Don't want that.
I don't want to get into any FERPA issues. I don't want to get into any open record issues. And if I've got a fifteen-year-old coming up here, I don't want their name broadcast.
I think a resolution sounds...
A resolution that's very general, and, you know, pledging cooperation, and applauding the schools for, you know, this idea, that something like that is fine, but I...
Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, there's just too much risk in this day and age.
Right.
Maybe we do it one time.
Well, and two, maybe the school could use our, I mean, we televise it. Maybe they could use that as part of their tool for classroom curriculum, instead of the kids coming in here.
Or that option. The ones who can, outside of band and all the other things that they have. You may see two or three sitting here, and the other ones will watch it, pull the video, Facebook, and watch it in their other sources.
It sounds like the council as a whole wants to embrace a version of this. So, however, and if you want to follow back up after you talk to the people to be, and then let us know.
Because I think you just sort of left it as however we wanted to package it, because I really don't think they're gonna do any credit or anything. It's just civic engagement for them.
What is the frequency? One time or every meeting?
One time, once a month.
One time, once a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which is probably our regular schedule meeting.
Regular. Okay.
Very good.
All right. Next, Mayor Council update. I just gotta make a correction on a, I wasn't here last month when you all did the bids. And, because I love numbers, and I'm such the smartest guy in the room, I caught something and told Ashley she screwed up, which was very joyful for me. But, no, it was a simple misread, and I want to correct it. We only had, and it's not changing the bid itself, it's changing just what was read out loud. So I want to make that correction. The sign-in sheet had Ashley, Chris, and then, of course, Car Shad Pros, you all did approve the sixty-three thousand. What it was supposed to be, there was a ten thousand dollar deposit. The way he wrote his, and Mr. Pike, you can see it here, ten thousand, he subtracted it off the actual price. And then when he wrote the price down, it was the difference. He didn't... So when Ashley read the actual bid, it was sixty-three thousand, six oh four. It was actually supposed to be the seventy-two thousand, one fifty-five, which is still within budget, and it's still within the scope of what we bid. It's just, I want to make sure that correction was made, because after we looked at it, it's just we have to correct that. So what she announced in the bid, while she wrote down what was correct, the announcement of the bid was wrong. So I want to correct that. Is that right, Ashley?
Because we've already paid a deposit, so it's actually a total, it's more, cost more. Okay.
It was just the way he, and I just showed Mr. Pike the way he wrote the bid. It just makes it look like it's less than, but it's not. So I just want to make that correction. And I got to get one up on Ashley, so, you're welcome, Ashley.
Chalk it up, because it ain't gonna happen again.
Ain't many times I get to make fun, I get to poke at her a little bit, so... But no, that was fine. So we got that squared away, and as long as you all are okay with that. And I think Mr. Pike, that's clear?
Yeah, so the bid number was reported properly, announced improperly, and the money expenditure...
It was the same, yeah. So, it's just a...
You good?
This?
See this?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's just a correction. All right, and then, I think that was all I had. I do have an update that I'll probably mention. I need a little bit more information. I just have something from Lincoln Trail I had. I just want to get some clarification before I do something with that. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so if not, we will move on to Mayor Council comments. Mr. Thompson, I'll start on your end.
Okay, I have one. On December sixth, the Alpha Lodge twenty-eight ninety-one is sponsoring breakfast. And the organizers is Kimberly Luna and Marie Torres. And the cost is one can of food or non-perishable item, or donations if you choose. And it'll be from, it's at Colvin Community Center, and it'll be from nine AM until the food is gone.
That's a pancake.
So, you know, community activity.
December sixth, right?
Yes, December sixth, nine AM until food is gone.
And we're having a craft show after that, at the tent?
No, they're doing it.
They're doing a craft at the tent. All right, Ms. Owens?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Merle?
Yes. I've got a couple of announcements for the Radcliffe City, City of Radcliffe, Radcliffe Women's Club, our two fire departments, and the Kentucky Anna Girl Scout Troop Five Forty-nine. We'll be doing a food drive through the month of November. The drop-off donations for non-perishable food items, canned goods, non-perishable items, cereals, personal hygiene items, baby items, diapers, wipes, formula. The drop-off locations are the two different Radcliffe Fire Departments, Station One, Station Two. And that is Monday through Sunday, so seven days a week. If you have any items, you could drop off from eight AM to eight PM. And this will be on the city website, Colvin Community website, Radcliffe Women's website, Facebook page, Facebook page. And then we're gonna donate these goods at the end of the month to Helping Hands of Hope and Warm Blessings. Also, the City of Radcliffe Tree Lighting is the first Friday, December fifth. It will be at six PM, free photos with Santa. It is at Colvin Community Center, and we will have the Festival of Trees. You can call Colvin if you want to drop off a tree, or set up a tree, I should say. You can't drop it off. You've got to set it up and decorate it. Two-seven-zero, three-five-one, four-oh-seven-nine. And that's November seventeenth. You can start decorating the trees. You all stop it. Decoration for the Festival of Trees. But you can also go on their Facebook page, Colvin, to get that information. And to all of our veterans that are here, that are listening, that are in our community, and around the world, Happy Veterans Day, and thank you for your service and sacrifice. That is it, Mayor.
I guess I'll just go home. She took everything I had to say.
I think she got it all. She's got my list of... I do want to ask about leaf pickup. I'm sure we have been doing that. Yes, no?
They usually start in November, so, yeah.
So everybody needs to get their leaves out by the road.
Well, usually, we give them time to fall, so it's, they're just...
They're blowing up in my Facebook.
I still have quite a few that haven't fell yet at my house, but yeah. So we usually start at mid, end of November, go through December, January.
So, and I'm assuming we're prepared for snow this year. It came early this time.
Well, to your point, just, and, you know, I did post something, but I know some people were asking about Joe Prather, Dixie. Those are roads that we don't do. I will say, our salt truck was out hitting the spots that we know are typically bad. The Bridges, Preston, some of those roads that are slick, Wilson. And so, once the sun kind of came out, it kind of took that, heated the road up a little bit enough.
I mean, I really didn't expect the roads to be slick, but, I mean...
I think a lot of people did it, but I did notice, and this is just me being out, I'm sure our police chief would say the same. People were driving like it was a sunny day. And there was, you know, I'm very, very cautious in my vehicle, and a lady in a white little vehicle almost rear-ended me, because she was driving way too fast, and she slid, and she went the other lane. Thank goodness someone was coming, but, you know, you have to be cautious. You have to take some responsibility.
I mean, it looked like it was just a dusting. I mean, till I hit that road, I mean, it was like ice out there this morning, so...
Yes, but we do have two trucks that are being worked on. They're getting their stuff put on them, because they were doing trucks. But like everybody else, everybody else is getting their trucks done, so the company that's doing it is just a little behind.
Well, I mean, who would have thought November the tenth, we would have snow, right?
But tomorrow morning, you should take the same precaution. Just be careful.
Absolutely. And like Toshi said, or Councilwoman Merle, Happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans, near and far, and for those that are serving out of our country currently. Our thoughts and prayers are with you, so Happy Veterans Day to everyone.
Ms. Merle?
Ditto. Happy Veterans Day. It means so much for your service, both veterans and current service members. And finally, I'd like to compliment and thank Councilwoman Owens for trying to shed light in this vast darkness. By trying to, I know you spent two and a half years working on this youth council idea. And I hope we can bring some of that to fruition. But I applaud your work, and I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Ms. Bill?
Bidet Change Inc. is having, starting tomorrow, a food drive at the eight-three-three North Dixie Boulevard from four to six, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, every week, until the final day of the twenty-sixth of November, the day before Thanksgiving, at the same address, eight-thirty-three North Dixie Boulevard. We will distribute meals. There is a confusion about meals, box, or baskets. It's meals. All the ingredients that people will donate, monetary, we have already, people responded today. We had the Red Hatters. I want to thank the Red Hatters of Hardin County. They knocked on my door at my home, and they gave me a lot of food. It almost filled my brother's truck, the back of the truck. And it's meals. It's cooked meals for low-income families, homeless, veterans, Hardin County, because that was another confusion in the beginning, that I was going to feed only Radcliffe, because I did not have the response and the ingredients, but they're coming. So anybody, low-income, needs food, families, twenty-sixth November, will have cooked meals at the eight-thirty-three North Dixie Boulevard in Radcliffe Plaza. Gentleman donated the space, and they will be coming out of there. Real meals, ready to open the bag, sit down, and eat.
All right.
And Happy Veterans Day, because we have some veterans. People have started calling for meals already, and we have veterans in the list.
All right. Well, thank you. I also want to thank our Public Works today. While, you know, they know it's their job, they did go out and put up our flags. It was cold. They rode out in the back of the trucks, and I watched Doug get in the back of the truck, and they rotated it off, but they got all of our flags up down Lincoln Trail. So we appreciate them going out today to get those up. Also, Veteran Day, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we will be closed. Like everyone said, we want to recognize our veterans. Make sure you do something to recognize a veteran for tomorrow. Also, it's happened every year for the last several years. Sheriff John Ward always, we open up our fire department for those. He comes up here on Veterans Day. He goes around the county to help people collect taxes. So if you want to pay your taxes, and don't want to have to go down to the courthouse, Sheriff Ward and his staff will be at our fire department from nine to eleven to collect your county taxes. And remember, that is a, I think it's a two percent early discount, if I'm not mistaken. If you pay early, that'll be at our fire station one there, off of Wilson Road, just behind Captain D's there, or Taco Bell, Freddy's right there. I can't think of the address off the top of my head. Six oh four, there we go. And there was something else I was gonna mention, just said Veterans Day. Oh, and we hope that the federal government finally gets this thing figured out, because it's been a disaster for many people for the last few weeks. So we hope some people, they get this thing figured out. You know, people sitting up here is affected by this, so we hope that they get that figured out, and they'll get it done before the holiday season, so... All right. Next meeting is scheduled, let's see, November eighteenth. Hopefully, by stuffiness and cold, and whatever I got will be gone, and it is flu season. Wash your hands. It's getting cold out. And I want to leave, Kim, because, Kim, you always do it. You didn't do it this year, but I'm gonna let you do this before we leave.
Of course.
You always say, "It's cold outside."
It's cold.
If it's hot outside, it's cold outside.
It's cold outside. Hey, I am. At the next meeting, when I leave, I want Hawaii. Hawaii?
Just shut his mic off, Kim. Just turn his mic off. Ain't nobody gonna be talking down there.
And then, Anna, January in Mexico. And in the middle of that, Atlanta, Georgia.
Oh, goodness.
It's that time of year.
I guess it is.
Somewhat time I'll work, like, almost seven days a week.
Well, hey, it's retirement. You'd enjoy it, right?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm supposedly retired.
All right. We'll see you off the next meeting. Thank you all.